Well, I think it's running.
We're live?
Okay, being seven o'clock.
All right, being seven o'clock, the Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 10th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, 500 Glenwood Way. First order of business is old and new business, approval of the minutes of the September 12, 2019 meeting. We have enough people here to do this.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 12, 2019 meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, being after seven o'clock, the Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 10th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on the petition of Mass Sign &amp; Decal Inc., 443 Webster Street, Rockland, for a sign waiver under 175-58.3 at 371 Center Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 32, Lot 16, in the highway commercial zone.
Is there someone here representing them? Going once, going twice?
Um... Is it seven o'clock?
It is actually seven o'clock.
Verizon?
Verizon, okay, okay.
Bring one in.
I was just waiting, yeah. I see you mingling over there. Yep, where it is.
Perfect timing.
If you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Joe Healy with Mass Sign. And we're seeking a variance for a...
No, not a variance.
Waiver?
For the rear of the store.
Okay, so you're looking for a waiver, you're not looking for a variance?
Okay.
Okay.
So to remove that awning and replace it with the sign. Does everyone have copies?
Yes.
Yeah, we do. So it's a very rare, like, the one facing Wendy's? Is that what we're talking about, the rear of it?
Uh, it would face the restaurant across the street.
Oh, Deans?
Yes.
Oh, it's...
So it faces the street.
Okay, all right.
Which would be the rear of the building.
Okay.
The front faces Stop &amp; Shop.
So what's the distinction between the current sign and the sign that you're proposing?
Uh, the current is an 80-foot-long by nearly 8-foot-tall awning, and there's too much work to it.
Oh, okay, I see, I see.
That's required.
This is more for the awning than it is for the sign?
Yeah.
The words themselves, I mean? The Verizon?
I'm not following.
You have this huge awning, and you have the word Verizon on the left-hand rear of the building. Now you're gonna center that and take the awning off?
No, that's what Verizon would like. They'd like to justify the new sign, or the proposed sign, to the left.
Okay.
In place of the awning.
Okay.
So the main sign isn't moving at all, correct?
The pole sign?
The pole sign.
No.
That's, okay.
We're permitted now to reface the pole sign, paint it, and on the front elevation, facing Stop &amp; Shop, put up the same sign.
So it's just a removal of the awning and installation of a new sign?
Is there an awning on the other side, or is just...
No.
Okay.
And is the new sign gonna be lit?
Yes, internally illuminated.
All right, and what are the, uh, there are hours on that, or...
Hours on the illumination?
Yes.
Uh, don't know, what would you like?
Well, 24 hours, or what were you planning on doing?
Typically, it's done dusk till dawn.
Okay, all right.
I think we have...
We do have, there's hours in the...
Yeah, there's hours in the bylaw.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
We approved them a few years ago.
So, I mean, um, we could just condition it on being compliant with the existing bylaws for illumination?
I should look it up, though.
Hmm.
Working right now.
Um...
175... 149, I think it is.
149, you said?
I thought it was 149. 75... 49, 175-49.
Yeah, it doesn't go into the hours.
I know we have hours.
Yeah, we do have hours. All right, I mean, we can condition it to just be in conformance with the existing bylaws, yeah, so it's not an issue.
There's Andy when you need him. He probably would've said boom.
Are you looking for the hours?
Yeah.
There are hours, I'll find them.
He broke them, right? Should be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're in 175-58, it looks like, uh...
Based on the district?
58 what?
Uh...
Or waivers?
A, let's see, no sign or advertising device, so A4, 175-58, A4 illuminated, shall be illuminated between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM unless the sign, the use associated with said sign is being operated, such as a business, open to customers. So what are your hours of op, I'm assuming you're not opening between 11:00 and 6:00 AM?
I do not know the store hours.
Okay.
How do we go with that, then? That would be the requirement.
What's that?
You can't have it lit between 11:00 and 6:00.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
11:00 PM to 6:00 AM?
11:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Okay.
All right, good. How bright is it gonna be, I mean? It's gonna be, uh, not a distraction to drive, is it correct? Not too bright?
No.
All right. No outside lights facing it, no?
No, it's all internal illumination.
Okay.
They'll be individually illuminated, um...
Each letter?
Yes.
And it's just that one side?
So during the day, the letters appear to be black.
Right.
But at night, it's a perforated film that goes over the face of each letter.
Mm-hmm.
So that reduces the output. Um, I don't have the exact percentage, but it'll be minimal.
It darkens the light.
It won't be glaring.
All right.
Or distract drivers.
So we are just making a determination on whether or not they can actually...
Have the waiver.
Have the sign there, but then they're gonna have it approved by the Building Department and ensure that it complies with all the zoning regulations related to illumination and things like that.
Yeah, he needs approval to remove it, put a new one on.
Yeah, so, all that can be worked out with the Building Department, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think, I'll make a motion.
Well, we gotta open it up for that.
Open the public, or...
You guys, anything else?
No.
All right. Can I open it up to the floor? Any questions on the petition? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. All right, guys.
I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver to Section 175-58-3 for the Mass Sign &amp; Decal to adjust the Verizon sign that faces Center Street.
Sure, and I would, um, I would just ask that we condition the waiver on, um, on the petitioners, the sign meeting, all the other wise requirements within the bylaws related to...
Correct. I'll accept that.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Good luck with that.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your time.
All right, being after 7:05, the Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 10th, 2019, at 7:05 at Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington, on remand order from the Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee dated September 20, 2019, on a comprehensive permit issued under MGLC Chapter 40B to Abington Investments LLC, 245 Central Street, Abington, granting relief from the following: 175-21A and J uses, 175-29 dimensional and density regulations, 175-431A, 175-432A, 175-50B and C, 175-52G parking and loading requirements, 175-31, 175-32A, B, C, D, E, multifamily use, 175-34 earth removal, 175-37 transit-oriented development, 175-66 buffer strip, 175-67.1 outdoor lighting, for 144 rental units known as Abington Senior Housing at 1015 Plymouth Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 17 and 18, Lots 23 and 6, in the R30 zone.
Bill?
Thank you, Dan Bailey from Pierce Atwood LLP, attorney for Abington Investments. Sean Hardy, the project engineer, is with me, as is Sean Carpenter, who's been the 40B consultant on this project, in the audience, as well as my clients, the LaPointe family. We're here on a remand from the Housing Appeals Committee. Um, you know, the, um, just to go over a little bit of the procedural setting, the board issued a comprehensive permit some months ago. We objected to some of the conditions and filed an appeal with the Housing Appeals Committee. Housing Appeals Committee asked, staff person asked whether we would, we wouldn't need to mediate. Um, they pretty much ordered us to mediate, uh, and so we did that, and we had a promising, and what we thought was successful mediation, I forget the date, late August, I think it was, Mr. Negrelli was there, Town Council, um, and came out of there with, and agreed upon, proposed revision to the comprehensive permit with a few conditions that, if they were changed, we would accept and we could end the appeal. So we've submitted revised plans, Sean can go over those in a minute, but it's really pretty simple. We objected to Condition 5, which had required 24-foot wide right-of-way. What we discussed at the mediation was a 22-foot wide right-of-way with, um, you know, 11-foot lanes, 1-foot shoulder on each side where possible. Condition 13, which is more of a really hyper-technical legal issue, having to do with when we would have to come back to the board, you know, for approval of a transfer. We had objected to language that said we'd have to come back to the board after, for approval of a transfer after substantial completion. What we've agreed upon is that, you know, we would always need approval from the subsidizing agency, basically from the state. That's the DHCD regulations, before substantial completion in order to transfer it. What we would be willing to do, vis a vis the board, is that before any such transfer, we would notify the board, come into the board to answer any questions, but the board's approval would not be a, uh, a condition of any transfer of the permit. Conditions 18 and 56, these had to do with payment of the board's, um, engineering fees during construction of the, um, project. Our objection was that those types of fees aren't really 40, you know, Section 53-G fees. There's no statutory authority for them, but my client has agreed to contribute $10,000 toward those fees. Um, we had also objected to 65, uh, which had required isolator rows, which, and Sean could explain this more, but, um, just technically didn't work with the type of stormwater system that we had. Our legal position on this was we complied with the state stormwater requirements, and that's all we had to do with the Coltech system. Condition 74, regarding a landscaping plan for the owners of 2009 and 2019 Plymouth Street and Mr. Dickey across the street, and Mr. LaPointe has that landscaping plan with him here tonight, we can show it to you in a few minutes. And then we said we'd request a remand, you know, from the Housing Appeals Committee. The Housing Appeals Committee did order a remand, uh, issue a remand order directing us to have a public hearing with the board on or before October 24th. Uh, Sean, why don't you...
Underground utilities.
Ah, underground utilities. Um, yeah, we will have underground utilities. The, our concern there was that if we had to tie into a utility pole out on Plymouth Street, there might be just one spot where it would come down, but it'll come down, right down to a transformer and then go underground, so that's not an issue. Sean, why don't you just quickly go over the change to the roadway, 'cause that's the big thing?
Yeah, so, we, the reasoning was that 24-foot wide part is over the 5,000-square-foot disturbance for a wetland disturbance, so, um, what we have here is two 11-foot travel lanes with a 1-foot shoulder on each side, so it's 24 feet curb-to-curb from the entrance into Oak Station 5 plus 00, so about 500 feet and, um, roughly halfway, and then you start getting into the way the wetland disturbance is. So from there on, the curbing gets closer and it maintains the same 11-foot travel lanes, um, it's just, it's a 22-foot curb-to-curb to get through the stretch of the wetland impact, and then it gets back out again for the 24-foot wide of the building closer out, and it's in, and maintains those 24-foot lanes in and around through the parking area.
It's still sidewalk, right?
Still sidewalk, yeah, on that same, um, disaster, one of those revisions, yeah, it's on the away side and then crosses back over as it gets up out of the building, um, here. Um, the other thing, as the attorney said, was the isolator rows, we're using Coltech chambers, there was, I think, a little back-and-forth about the type of system. Coltech, their language doesn't require that, or, uh, that, the one they referred to was a, uh, Coltech chamber, which is a different, exactly slightly different chamber, um, so the reason for all the C, we're actually getting very proud of the confirmation. The other thing I did on this plan was to kind of clean up on the conditions, we restored 14 parking spaces up here that were close to the electric easement, that was one of the conditions. We added another hydrant, so we, um, over on this other revolve parking lot, that was one of the, um, the requirements, and we added a note down here just to say that the proposed utility layout, as depicted, it's kind of general in nature, it's subject to the actual, um, utility company saying, uh, this has to go here or there, and they're also trying to get an easement for utilities through this area, so currently we're showing them all coming down the street here, coming out and, like, the electric going underground over to that pole, and gas, water, and sewer all coming out this way. If that easement becomes available, if the utilities say that's the better route, then that's what we'd like to do, so I tried to just capture that and put that note.
Well, where's that transformer gonna be, uh, out on the Plymouth Street side?
That's the thing, until they start getting with the electric company and the loads, and they start selecting, you know, what kind of heat units and that type of stuff, it's hard to size that for this level of detail. That kind of comes further down, so that's why I want to say it's a general in nature, that it's not been worked out where that...
Well, I just, uh, we just don't really want it in front of people's houses or right behind their houses.
I, I mean, generally, I think the transformer, they probably, where there's no real load in here, I would think a transformer would...
Be on the other side?
Close to the building. Um, this was just, this would just feed that, there's no real load other than some of the little streetlights.
I'm just concerned about the two houses there, that's all I'm...
I would think they would have it down there.
Okay.
What is the lighting for the roadway?
We had, shh, we had shown, it's not on this, there was a separate lighting plan that was submitted...
I don't recall, is it...
And it's subject for final approval, but there was a couple of pole lights on.
Pole, okay.
And on, go ahead.
You have enough room for those?
Yes.
On the roadway width, wasn't there some discussion about whether or not you would qualify for an exemption from the, um, what lends through, what an isolated lot or limited project or something like that? Did that ever come to fruition, or was that...
You didn't want to do that route.
You didn't want to do that route?
Well, it's not only that it would be just from the DEP, when you go over 5,000, whether it's a limited project or not, you're subject to Army Corps jurisdiction, and it's a whole nother level of, like, federal permitting, whether they consent to that or not.
Okay.
If you stay under 5,000 and comply with state DEP requirements, then you get, you have automatic Army Corps permit, it's a permit by rule, uh, but once you go over, you have to submit an application and you're subject to full, you know, a full review.
Okay.
Are very rarely denied, in my, in my experience, but...
And then, uh, and with respect to the fees, you said that, um, there was, your client was putting in $10,000, do you have a general estimate on what those usually run, a project of this nature?
I, peer review for construction, I really don't.
Sean thought that that would be enough.
Okay.
Did you hear from Sean?
I have not. Um, we did speak with Sean during mediation, but, um, we have not heard, um, from Sean on his review of the plans, um, and so I think that, uh, there's a couple options this board can do. We can, um, close the hearing without Sean taking a look at it, or you can wait and get something in writing from Sean, um, for your next meeting, which, at that point, you could have a decision ready and finish the whole thing up.
Well, I, the way I look at it right now is, I mean, we've been listening to the whole project, it's been a long, long project.
And, and, you won't lose any time, they won't lose any time, because you would be, you would be signing, you would be going over a decision and signing it at your next meeting, anyway.
When is the next meeting?
I think it's November 14th. It's the second Tuesday, second Thursday?
Second Thursday.
All right. So we can have everything wrapped up, then, if we have to be, we have to have the hearing by November 15th, so we're all set. Provided it's November 14th, I think it is, that's what I have.
Second Thursday's the 14th.
Yeah, that's what I have in my book.
And then, you said that...
So what it, what the remand order says, the remand order says we have to hold the hearing by November 15th, and then we have to have a decision filed 30 days...
Oh, okay.
After it closes.
Oh, okay, all right.
So they won't lose any time, because we're actually holding the hearing way before November 15th, plus we're gonna have a decision on the 14th for you to review.
Yeah.
And if there's any changes, they can be made in a couple days.
All right, okay.
To the decision.
Right, I got you, yeah. So we wouldn't be voting on it tonight.
No, 'cause you don't have a decision in front of you.
Okay.
And the decision will be essentially exactly what you guys have already seen...
Yeah, yeah.
With those...
Modifications.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I have eight changes. Not, seven changes, wait, I can't get, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven changes is what I have.
Now, the storm drain, that wasn't a deal breaker, right?
The Coltech?
Right.
No, when we talked to Sean, he said that...
That was a check, we had that. And we wanted this, and we got this...
Yeah.
For the road.
And we wanted the money, and we got the money.
We got the money, okay.
And then, um...
For the landscape plan?
The screening, we need to see that.
Neighbors, yeah.
Yeah, we've got these right here.
Have to be, have others reviewed that at all, or is this the first time they're seeing it?
Come on up here, yeah, go over this with the board, because you did it, I didn't. So, we should just come on up and talk.
Okay.
Call out, phone's this way.
So, I'm LaPointe Jr., uh, representing Abington Investments. So this has been a work in progress, I think, pretty much from the very beginning, uh, a lot of back-and-forth between most of the neighbors. Um, so the last hurdle was Linda Holt and her family who are here tonight, and, uh, we had another plan drawn, we went back to the drawing board, we met with them on Saturday to go over everything, and I think we came to a pretty good agreement on Saturday afternoon with Linda, um, her son and son-in-law. Um, what we agreed to do was, there's an existing stacked stone wall on this side of the property, they wanted us to extend the stacked stone wall to offer them, basically a barrier, yeah, barrier of protection. They also came back and wanted it extended on this side as well, which we...
What number is that, I'm sorry?
Um, 1019.
1009.
Yeah, 1009, 1009.
Sorry, thank you, go ahead.
So, uh, we agreed to extend the stone wall over here, and one of their main concerns was traffic on the corner, right? So, um, they came up with the idea that we continue the stacked stone wall along here and make like a planting, uh, in the middle, just to add an extra buffer in case there are any accidents up there. They also asked that we extend the stone wall, uh, down to where the existing fence is, uh, which we also agreed to do, offer that layer of, of protection. Also, now, as you guys remember before, we, we flip-flop the sidewalk that was originally on this side, on this side, yeah, so that'll also, you'll have the curb, sidewalk, then that. We also agreed to, uh, fit some, a planting in from the end of the stone wall along the fence, there's a fence right here, that we agreed that we would, uh, offer, that's that way people weren't kind of looking into their backyard, it would give them a buffer to be able to, to, you know, have some space. Um, and the old fence ran, uh, across the back of their property in this direction. They asked if we would put it on the, remove, add to it and put it on the property line. Yes, all right, uh, so we agreed to do that. Uh, they wanted a barrier here to prevent, uh, any light infiltration or anything like that, so what we agreed to is we were gonna do a raised bed here with spruce, spruce tree plantings on it.
And they had concerns, oh, I was just gonna say they had concerns about the grading, right, so the sidewalk will take care of that, right?
Yeah, so, so, the other thing that we agreed to do, which, which isn't on the plan, but we're gonna, we're gonna actually remove this fence as this grade gets lifted up, so that they're not kind of down in a, in a ditch. Uh, and then we told them that we would come in, strip the topsoil off this, and raise the elevation of their yard, backyard, to match the elevation of this, and then re-lome hydroseed and...
Match the elevation of what?
Of the existing, um...
Roadbed?
Of the existing roadway, exactly. So that they weren't kind of...
Proposed roadway or existing?
Proposed, yeah.
Proposed, proposed roadway.
I misspoke. Yeah, proposed roadway.
So is any of that on this? None of that's on this, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
So this is just the property line, that's, that, so the fence is gonna match...
Yeah, I see, right here, property line, yeah.
So we're gonna...
And so, along the property line, you're gonna, you're just gonna, you're gonna have trees on your property?
Yes, yes, yep. So what we'll end up doing is taking this fence down, just so it's not buried, as far as when the grades come back in, then we will reinstall the fence up on, on the new grade, and then match, so they don't stuck down the hole, we will rematch into the grade out in their backyard, essentially redo, redo the backyard area.
So, could we maybe just get that...
Writing?
Yeah, just so we don't, just so, I mean, I don't think you need to do a topo plan or anything, could you just put that...
Right on the plan, it's getting submitted to you guys.
Yeah, or just put it with something that we have?
Yeah, that's what we have.
Sure.
So what do you do on the other side, now?
Could we do it by putting a note on that plan?
Yeah, whatever, but, um, as long as I have it, 'cause I'll, I won't get it right. So, all I have is strip topsoil to match elevation of proposed road, but then you're also going to...
Extend the stone wall all the way around.
I have all that. So whatever's shown on the plan is fine.
So whatever we're gonna do in the backyard area, as far as...
Which is not shown.
As far as raising the grade...
Document, that's it.
And then lome and hydroseed.
And just say raise it to, you don't have to give me a, you don't have to give us an elevation, but just say raise it to the proposed road.
Okay, perfect.
Equal to the height of the proposed road.
Perfect, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's everything on that side.
Yeah, so that was, the other, um, neighbors have been talked to ahead of time, and, and we had come to an agreement with, uh, Mr. Dougherty across the street. I have, um, a landscape plan, showing what we've agreed to do, uh, to his house, uh, just for screening, so his house might, would be situated up in this area, the project would be over here. So what he was asking for was a planting here to prevent any light infiltration, more, I think, uh, Amy had said this before, it's more of a screening.
Yeah, the lights and that stuff.
Yeah, yep, yep. Um, so, um, they redrew a, a whole plan of what they intend to do, and it's, I talked to, uh, Boss Ellis and Kane, who is doing this work, who actually is looking to... So whatever we're gonna do in the backyard area, as far as-
Which is not shown.
-as far as raising the grade-
Doc, I mean, that's it.
And then lome and hydroseed.
And just say raise it to, you don't have to give me, you don't have to give us an elevation, but just say raise it to the proposed road.
Okay, perfect.
Equal to the head of the proposed road.
Perfect, I can do that.
Okay.
So that's everything on that side.
Yeah, so that was, the other neighbors have been talked to ahead of time, and we had come to an agreement with Mr. Darty across the street. I have a landscape plan, showing what we've agreed to do to his house, just for screening, so his house might, would be situated up in this area. The project would be over here. So what he was asking for was a planting here to prevent any light infiltration, more, I think Amy had said this before, it's more of a screening.
Yep, the lights and that stuff.
Yeah, yep, yep. So, they redrew a whole plan of what they intend to do, and it's, I talked to Boselis and Kane, who is doing this work, who actually is looking to try to do this work within the next couple of weeks, on this, and-
What's over here, what's this?
This is another, it's, it's, so this, this is the drive, yeah, this is the driveway, and it's just, it's just, I think that is a stone, you know, just in case, but the trees and planting around as well, just to try to prevent the light infiltration on that, okay?
Yeah, what he probably does-
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that's fine, what he has right there is fine.
Okay.
As long, yeah.
And, and over here, this is the other side, and it's, it's-
This is 1019?
Yes, yep.
1019.
So-
The Reeves' property?
Tree, yep, trees, rocks, and basically a planting to go down along the side on our property, just down past their, past their residence, alright.
So, just, because I'm new to the thing-
Yep.
I heard there's a proposed crosswalk from the sidewalk on this side to come over here at some point, or not? Is the sidewalk gonna stand this way, all the way?
Yeah, because originally, what you might have misunderstood was, originally the sidewalk was on this side.
Was on that side.
And Mrs. Holt asked that we-
Move it over?
-put that on her side to try to give her a little bit more protection in a little bit of area.
Yeah, alright.
Which Sean was able to do.
So basically, what this does is balance out what you were doing over here to their back property line?
Yes.
And is there any situation here for their land, like this land over here being below grade of the proposed road?
They have, their backyard here goes along the fence line, they have a lot of land out here, so it's not, Linda's side is, seems like it's, it's a lot tighter.
Okay.
Exactly right. So this side here has, has a lot more room to, to grade and do things, as opposed to Linda's side, which-
Okay.
You know, and I think that was a lot of the issue, you know, going back and forth with Linda and her family, trying to kind of figure out what was gonna be the best, best situation for everybody.
Okay.
So.
I like it, I like it a lot.
Thank you, that's really, that's good.
I'll add those to the, for next meeting.
Yeah, just add those notes, and then we can just take that plan and reference it.
We'll get that into a hit time, so you can have-
Is that the only plan you have?
No, I have it actually, I have it tonight, I don't, it doesn't have to be anything formal.
Okay.
As long as it's in writing on the plan. It's not a stamped plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you should put it on a plan. Or yeah, just get it to me, I'll just put it as part of the decision.
Okay.
The plan has a date in the title, right? Something that I can reference?
I can put on whatever it is, whatever, the date of, the date of this, this year.
Yeah, that's, this is fine.
This one has priority residence?
Maybe up in arms?
Just write a date in.
Yeah, that's fine, these are fine, and then just add, add a note about the raising. And then I'll just put that in, I'll make that part of the decision. So those plans are part of the decision along with, along with these plans, which are, it's 9/18 is the, is the date, right? That's what I have. Is that right?
He's looking for a date.
I wrote 9/9.
Really? Am I a crazy person, look? Maybe I am. Oh, I am, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the wrong year, sorry, look at 9/18/18. It's been a year?
Bottom board, wow.
Sorry about that.
Oh, yeah.
Freshman year. I dropped her off this morning.
I realized it was that long, I thought this one went really quick. Wow, guess my other super, really long.
Take back those 10 days right away.
So alright, so we have that checked off, and what else was there?
That was it. So, I will take the agreement that we came to, that Dan outlined with the conditions, I'm just changing those conditions.
Okay.
All of the other conditions and finding, I'll, I'll check the findings, I think the findings are fine, but if the findings have to change because the conditions changed, I will change those also, but I will get you guys a, what you guys will have before you on the 14th is a red line and a clean copy.
Okay, alright.
So you can see the changes I made.
Okay, and then do we have to open this up to the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it all set, and you guys will sell this, can we open up the floor?
Okay, David.
Yeah?
Glad to be great, and, and work with us.
Could you just say your name and your-
Oh, I'm sure we can do it, down the avenue of the street.
Okay.
You come down and work with us, our main concerns were lighting, headlights coming in and shining into the bedroom, obviously the turn of cars in a winter time and stuff like that, smashing through in the property and stuff like that, we'd give them a good solution to that by putting a wall there and stuff, to keep people off, you know, the driveway, something on our side, and stuff like that. And raising the level of the roads, who were not, you know, people peeking over and stuff like that. We addressed all the situations, and we love the raised bed on the corner with the trees and stuff, making sure they're in line with the corner, there aren't fences up to, just for people driving and stuff, because our primary worry is somebody's gonna crash through the yard and stuff like that. And also the lighting coming into the house, but raising that, I don't think we'll raise it anyway, so raising that whole level up is gonna help us a lot. Also, and be able to close our property line.
Yep.
You know, it's an awesome, you know, agreement we came across, and we're pretty happy about it, along with that, because the trouble is, maybe the decent side of the building there's no rocks, I mean, we've had to improvise, moving people away from our fence, and things like that, people peeking over and stuff like that, so we're definitely agreeing with that. Plus the current being there, a little detection before they go through the fence and that. So I mean, we've pretty much had a, we've, 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 we've-
That's great, that's what we wanted too, we wanted you to, everyone to, the neighborhood to, you know, heard from.
Yeah, when he goes and we're closing it, we, we agree, when we walked, that we closed that corner and take out, you know, two dead trees and a few shrubs, and close the fence and our property line there.
That's good, happy to hear that, that's positive.
Yeah.
Hi, Pam, you're here, 1026 Plymouth?
Yeah.
I had spoken with Glenn, I'm across the street, diagonally a little bit, and I had talked to him about having some screening done, and I actually met with Chris Kane-
Yours is on the list as well.
-by having heard anything about any screening on my property.
He told me he was gonna do yours in, that he's, yours was a two, we're gonna get it.
Oh, okay.
What number was that? 1026.
I'm 1026.
Do you have that written down, 1026?
No, I only have the person across the street. So, she's across the street, one over, or?
Two over.
Two over, one over. So Lynn goes next door to me-
Yeah.
-that had the fire, and unfortunately, they haven't asked for anything, so.
Yeah, beside them.
On my side.
So, I can have, Chris is, Chris said he talked to you-
He did, he came over to my house.
And he said, he said that you guys talked it over, he's gonna, he's planning on doing Dickey's and then yours at the same time, and I, he indicated to me within the next week or two. Yeah, as long as, as long as you got, he wants to get some of the planting done in the fall, he says it's better for, as far as trying to, you wash in, washing and stuff like that.
Okay.
Shall I touch base with him to find out what his opinion is?
Nope, nope.
Because I haven't seen anything.
I will do it, I will do it.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
Was there any plans for Dottie's house, depending up there, because she's directly across from the driveway?
No, nothing. And I sat, I, I ended up talking, I went there and sat down and explained everything to Mikey. Mikey, yeah, and went over with Dan, told him what we were doing, and stuff like that. He said, whatever you're doing across the street is good with him. So he was, you know, 10 minutes, and he didn't, I said, well, is there anything I could talk to you about, and the back and forth, and-
Alright, if there's no one else, we're closing to the floor and opening back to the table. Back to the board.
Just make a motion to continue?
Continue till November 14th.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, whichever one you do. You gotta read the whole thing, right?
I am, I am.
Well, I don't know what the whole thing is.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Public notice, the town, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 10th, 2019, at 7:05 PM, at the Abington office, at 5:00 on this way. Abington under a remand order for the Massachusetts Housing Committee dated on September 20th, 2019, on a comprehensive permit issued under Massachusetts law's Chapter 40B, under Abington Investments LLC at 245 Seventh Street, Abington granting relief from the following, 175-21A and J, users, 175-29, dimensional and density regulations, 175-43A, 1- A, 175-43, 2- A, 175-50B and 50C, 175-52G, parking and loading requirements, 175-31, 175-32A, B, C, D, E, multifamily use, 175-34, earth removal, 175-37, transit-oriented development, 175-66, office strip, 175-67.1, outdoor lighting for 144 rental units known as Abington Senior Housing at 1015 Plymouth Street.